Okay, good afternoon, everyone. And welcome to the September fifteenth, 2021, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order, and we do have a quorum present. We were worried about that for a minute, but we did it. Our first item of business will be to approve the minutes of the July twenty-first, 2021, August eighteenth, 2021, and September first, 2021, Planning Commission meetings. So if everyone had a chance to review those, if we have any additions, changes, or corrections, and if not, we're ready for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and our consent agenda as well. You can see, our staff has been busy, busy, busy. As we recently determined, we do not have to read all of these to you today. You all have them on your agenda. And so if anybody has any of these items, though, that they would like to remove from the agenda for further discussion, we can do that. And if not, we'll be ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
If there are no removals, I'll move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Old business, we have one item that we need to discuss, and it is the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance pertaining to Section thirteen, Planned Development Regulations, and Section twenty-four, Overlay District Regulations, Article six, the CCO, the City Core Overlay District. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Ms. Smith, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. This item, you may recall, goes all the way back to August fourth. Sorry it took so long to get it back to you all. But at that particular meeting, we had our initial discussion of some modifications to our City Core Overlay District Rules and Regulations, which is covered by this area shown on the map, which is generally our downtown core, includes our North Highlands area, it includes our Historic Bottoms Plan area, and then a few years ago, it was expanded. The three items that you had concern that you wanted to discuss further in the format of today's workshop was, one, parking. And staff wanted to point out from the parking, I think there was a little confusion last time, that the reductions in parking that we're looking at is really twofold. One, on the commercial and mixed-use side. And in that particular area, staff believes that the potential fifty percent reduction, if on-street striped parking is available, is still a good number for us. And then the seventy-five percent reduction, if it's within seven-hundred-and-fifty feet of a publicly-available parking. But we did update the text to actually state, as well as determined by the planning director, and instead of being a publicly-owned parking lot, because we know there are some public-private parking lots going to be coming onboard in our downtown area, we put that as a publicly-available parking. That's on the, really, the commercial side, but that caveat with the planning director, I think, allows for, not somebody asking for, let's say, a hundred parking spaces, oh, that's available. Well, it says to determine by the planning director. On the residential side, really, the only change that we have there is, in the CCO, normally, you would require one parking spot for a one-bedroom, two parking spots for anything two and above. So the current code update includes that they could go ahead and utilize that formula if there's available striped parking in front of the development. But if there is not, it would be one space per bedroom. So if they have a three-bedroom townhome, they would be required to provide three spaces, which is consistent with our multifamily zone districts are very similar as well. So that would be the residential side for the parking. Second item that came up was open space and formal open space. So most people don't realize our open space definition, as defined by our current code, is really, think about green space. Currently, it's required to have a certain portion of that, and then a certain portion of formal open space, but it's really hardscape that we have counted as open space. So what we have done in the language, as we heard from your last discussion, was only if it's a commonly-available open space, formal open space, will they be able to count that towards their requirement. So we wanted to make sure that that was in there. And then the second thing we heard was, well, geez, if you only build one to seven units, you mean they get no formal open space in the new proposal. So we did put in a small caveat there for a fifty-square-feet of outside space for those smaller tenant townhome developments, so that they do actually have a place to put their barbecue, sit outside, without having to share it with their neighbors. So those are how we currently address that, and we did pull the formal open space out into its own title, so it's much easier for the reader to be able to find that. And then, thirdly, what we did is, when we looked at height, as we were going back through the code, you may have noticed that we had proposed to change the two-story maximum in the CCO to a thirty-five-foot maximum height. And what that ticks and ties back to is all the residential districts citywide. That is the height restriction. And this was the only place where we actually identified two stories. So we wanted to do that for consistency purposes, and then really think of that thirty-five feet isn't necessarily the tallest point of the building. If it's a pitched roof, it's basically the midpoint of a pitched roof, or the top of a parapet. And then, secondly, the thing that we did notice, and as we were going through our both North Highlands study, we noticed that in our commercial or our non-residential districts, the CCO height limitations applied. So even though our, say, downtown core says you can have a seventy-five-foot height limitation, the way the CCO is currently written, they would be limited to the adjacent height plus the fifty percent. So we wanted to change that, and working with legal, we added some language that would basically state that use the underlying zone district for non-residential uses. So we're not basically giving them less than what they could do with a normal base zone district, which would allow our downtown to grow up, as we would like to see, but still keep those residential areas not having a six-story building next to a two-story neighborhood, as an example. And then, lastly, as we were going through and comparing that, those two plans, the Historic Bottoms and North Highlands Plan, we noticed that there were many uses that were included in our CCO that are not included in those plans. So staff suggested, and we would like to get the commission's concurrence, to consider adding to the prohibited list of uses, which are generally heavy industrial-type and heavy commercial-type uses, which, if you go by those additional plans, they would not allow when you look at those uses in their context. So staff worked with legal, Mr. Blomley, Mr. McKnight, myself, to pull out those things that we thought were probably not consistent with those particular plans. And so with that, staff would like to get any further direction on the draft code, and then at the end, would like to get commission's concurrence to address those additional prohibited uses, as well as set a new public hearing date for October thirteenth. Because the prohibited uses was not currently listed in our legal notification, we want to make sure that that's included in our legal notification. So with that, if you have any questions, today is not a public hearing, because we did close it at our last meeting, but staff is available to take any questions or direction that you would like to provide.
So I have a question. I just want to make sure I understand what supersedes what. And so here's my question. With respects to residential, does the thirty-five-foot maximum height supersede the one-and-a-half times, or does the one-and-a-half times supersede the thirty-five feet?
They work concurrently. So when we've looked at existing projects, we've started to ask them, please start putting all the height numbers in there, so we can do everything based on height. So if your neighbor is at twenty feet, and the next neighbor's at thirty feet, it's the average of those two, it's twenty-five, but they're still allowed the thirty-five. So that's how it currently works. So if you recall, the current rule says, even if you're surrounded by one stories, you get a minimum of two stories of building. So the thirty-five would similarly, because it's replacing the words "two-story," the intent would be, that would be the baseline that they could use, even if thirty was the average of the two plus the fifty percent more. Does that make sense?
Yes, kind of.
But I'll make sure that our legal takes a second look at that, to make sure that that's clearly the intent, as it's currently written.
Mr. Halliburton, if you took, like, if the adjacent building was, say, eighteen feet in height, and one-and-a-half times that would be twenty-seven, so instead of limiting that height to twenty-seven for the new structure, thirty-five would be the -- all residential structures would have the right to go up to at least thirty-five, because that's what's--
The answer would be that thirty-five supersedes the one-and-a-half.
In the event that the number would be less than--
Right.
--less than thirty-five, yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Halliburton. Are there questions and indoor comments regarding the requested changes? And are you asking, are we approving this on a motion as submitted, or are we setting it for the public hearing?
We would be setting it as a public hearing, and we would like your concurrence if we add those additional prohibited uses that were not previously involved in the prior legal notifications.
Okay. And you're asking for a public hearing date. Did I hear October fifteenth?
October thirteenth.
Thirteenth?
Yes, ma'am. So instead of the sixth, that meeting had been moved to the thirteenth.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. We set a public hearing on the thirteenth, as you have, with the information as you've submitted.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next, we have Platts and Plans. Our first one is the Segal Soccer Retail and Office Building Site Plan for sixty-two-hundred-square-foot office and retail building on one-hundred-and-twenty-four-point-five acres, zoned P, located along Cherry Lane. The City of Murfreesboro is the developer. Ms. Green, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Planning Commission members and Mrs. Jones. Our first item under Platts and Plans is for you to consider a site plan that's being presented to you on behalf of the City of Murfreesboro as the developer, and it is for a new building to be located on our Segal Soccer Complex, located south of Cherry Lane and west of Lebanon Highway. This map, that only takes up half the screen, where you see the word "site" is the proposed location of this building. So if you're familiar with this campus, it is close to the existing center building, but between two areas of parking. The building itself is just over six-thousand square feet, and it's to serve as mostly office space, city office space, but also there is a retail component to the structure. This isn't technically a retail use, it's a park use. That retail component is to serve the principal use of the park. I believe that it's to be a pro shop for soccer gear that our community is, would like to purchase here, but that would be a secondary portion of it. There's also a covered patio-like area here, and that is an extension of an area where sign-ups and rosters and communications can happen with the various teams who do visit the spot. The property is zoned park, so the proposed use is permitted in the park district, as it serves the principal use. The building that's proposed is a one-story structure, and I'll pull up some rendering so that you can see those. I think the color one's a little bit better. There you go. And you can see that it has the two separate entrances. The one in the center is the office entrance, and on the right, where you see the stone, would be for the retail portion of the building. As I mentioned, there's a canopy in the back. The canopy is here. And they did add some stone to the columns to cover up, just the exposed metal columns there. They've been able to address most of staff comments, and so staff would ask if you do approve it, you approve it, the subject of all staff comments. There were three comments from our design guidelines, and so it relates to architecture, that they weren't quite able to meet, and I have those listed in my staff report. The one of them is that the building is be divided every forty feet, and be taller than it is wide. And the second and third are related but different. A thirty-five percent void area is required for office space, and a fifty percent void area is required for retail. And with their proposed design of their building, and I'll invite the architect up in just a moment to go through a little more, and I think they'll be able to explain their request for you, they're asking for relief from these three standards, because this architectural design is an attempt to meet the overall aesthetic of the campus. And so the design guidelines does say, if planning commission finds that it's appropriate, that they can deviate from these specific standards if it fits the campus and has compatible architecture, and it's fitting the theme. And so what they're asking you to do is, the void area is about twenty-five to twenty-seven percent, so it's a little below what's required, but they're saying that they need that relief in order to help this building tie into the other buildings. If you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, I'd like to invite the architect to, like, turn after your questions.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Green before we hear from the architects? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Blake Nelson, CMH Architects. For once, I'm not here for an avenue project. But yes, architecturally, you know, I'll be happy to answer any specific questions that you have, but the basic marching orders were to try to take the architecture of the existing facility and kind of contemporize it a little bit for, you know, the current time and building climate that we're in. So, and to give it its own distinct identity, give it some visibility from Cherry. And, you know, it's a four-sided building. It's approachable from all sides, so it's got, you know, high-quality finishes on all four sides. The retail side is obviously more glass than the office side, which is, in turn, you know, there are limitations relative to the opening opportunities because of stockrooms, storage spaces, just simple things like desk heights and counter heights and things of that nature.
Okay. Any questions?
Are we talking concerns about the design or the retail portion of it? I guess I had a question on who's going to operate the pro shop.
Nate may be able to answer that more effectively than I can.
Hey. Good afternoon. Nate Williams, Director of Parks and Recreation. We're looking for a retail partner. We've been in discussion with a group that's not local, but wants to move an operation here, so it would be a third-party leasor of the, I guess, the retail space.
Okay. And the city would be the landlord? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. We already have a similar agreement on the other side. With this agreement, the Tennessee State Soccer Association is coming and moving their headquarters to Murfreesboro. This is why this whole project is happening. So we'll occupy one office in that area, from a Parks and Recreation standpoint, but we'll, on the office space area, that will be mostly occupied by Tennessee State Soccer Association. And this is based off an agreement with Tennessee State Soccer that was, I think it was adopted by council in April of 2019, and it's part of the agreement that we have with them to move that, their headquarters here, and provide office space for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Very exciting.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
We're just approving the Platts and the Plank Amendment. This is, yeah. I'll move for approval.
Second.
And subject to all staff comments.
Yes.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next item under Platts and Plans is the eight-forty Storage Solutions Site Plan for seventy-one-thousand-eighty-nine-square-foot self-service storage facility on eight-point-two acres, zoned PUD, located along Florence Road, I-840 and I-24. The Downs Group LLC is the developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you very much. Our second item under Platts and Plans is for you to consider a site plan for a second phase of a project that you reviewed last year, and it's referred to as the eight-forty self-storage, or say, eight-forty storage solutions. This property is shown on the TV before you, and it shows that it's outlined in the blue color. As you can see, it has frontage along Santana Street, Florence Road, eight-forty, and twenty-four. It's approximately eight-point-two acres, and the area that's being considered today is the southern portion of that property. You recall that the access to Santana Drive and the first phase of the construction is located on the north side. The property is zoned PUD planned unit district, and it was zoned such in 2003. The program book did not specifically state that a self-storage service facility is a permitted use. However, in 2003, there were images of buildings, and so the planning director in 2018 made a minor deviation to allow a self-storage facility as a permitted use. You may recall that last year, I mentioned that if it were zoned CH, or LI, or CF, that the use wouldn't be permitted here, because our zoning ordinance regulations require them to be three-hundred feet from a major intersection. Of course, this is within that three-hundred feet. Because the planned development did suggest that this would be a use here, it is something that the staff has determined would be a permitted use. As I mentioned, it has one access point to Santana Street, and there will be future commercial out parcels that front along Florence Road. Phase one was initially considered by the Planning Commission in May of last year, and it was deferred for a couple months and ultimately approved on July fifteenth. I did, when reviewing this application, go back a couple times and listen to that meeting to make sure that I was remembering the details and getting the information correct. And so with this phase, there are four proposed buildings. I've got a lot of images here. Two of them are accessed internally, and then two of the buildings do have the exterior roll-up doors. So on the screen, there's an area that's shaded dark gray, that's phase one, that's not a part of this plan, but everything that's not shaded dark gray is considered phase two and is proposed as part of this plan. So you can, the larger rectangles are those internally accessed buildings, and the very small, narrow ones are the externally accessed buildings. So phase one had a total of thirty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty square feet of floor area, and phase two has a little more than double that. So for a total in this development, it's proposed one-hundred-and-three thousand-two-hundred-and-nineteen square feet of floor area. What's also proposed with this development is an outdoor storage area of boats, RVs, trailers, and cars. That's generally not something that's permitted. However, it can be shown on a plan, and if approved by the Planning Commission, can be allowed. The outdoor storage does need to be restricted to those four types of, I guess, things, trailers, cars, RVs, and boats. And so the area that they're proposing it, I've circled in blue. When I re-listened to your meeting, I did hear a couple times, asking in phase one, was that a part of the plan? And I heard maybe some concern with that, and it wasn't at the time. So this is new information, of course. With this, they're now showing this outdoor storage area. The buildings that are proposed are almost identical to what was approved in phase one. The outdoor storage area has about forty-seven proposed spaces, and it is treated with a hard-dustless surface and has some landscaping. An additional challenge with the site is that there's a significant TVA easement in this area. And so we wanted to, one of the staff comments was that, obviously, TVA has to approve the plans, but then also how that interplay of the easement works within the site. During the due diligence meeting, the pre-application meeting, I did ask the applicants to consider more screening than a standard buffer for this area, since it is directly adjacent to single-family detached houses and directly adjacent to townhomes. And so I have consistently been asking for it, but it's not something that they're wanting to provide, and wanted to come to you today to have that conversation. The zoning ordinance does say that outdoor storage areas shall be screened from the view of the joining residential areas, and that it is the discretion of the Planning Commission to require earthberms, masonry fences, or walls adjacent to the residential areas. That very same condition, similarly, the zoning ordinance grants the Planning Commission discretion to require earthberms, masonry fences, or walls along public rights-of-way as well. And when you discussed this project last year, some of the things that I heard from Planning Commission was that a comfort level with maybe approving phase one and phase two would probably merit some additional scrutiny, due to the context of it, due to the high visibility of it, it being located adjacent to major accessways, visible from Florence Road Bridge, which does pass by, and you can see down into this property, and it being adjacent to residential units. The buildings in phase one did use a standard buffer and a vinyl fence to screen the buildings, but those did not have outdoor storage. And so I've asked for a masonry wall, similar to the self-storage on the corner of Northfield and Sulphur Springs, where they kind of back up to some single-family there. I've asked for a mason wall similar to that, or something more than the landscaping. Another concern with using a six-foot vinyl fence is that RVs range from ten to fourteen feet in height, and so we know that they'll definitely peek over the fence. So proposed is some landscaping that they believe is fast-growing and tall. I think that distance is a great buffer, but also an additional fence. Part of my concern with landscaping as a buffer is they're proposing all the screening for the townhome within a TVA easement. I went to TVA's website, and I'm familiar with some of their policies. And sometimes they allow low-growing plants within their easement, but they will not allow tall screening material there. So all the screening for the townhomes is located in TVA easements, so that's a concern as well. It would be up to TVA whether they would allow storage in their easement. They have allowed, they have allowed parking lots, so they may consider it the parking lot, I don't know. When they get back with us, I guess I'll have that information. Let's see here, what else? We did have some concerns with the viability of preserving some existing landscaping. Along the interstate, they're proposing a ten-foot perimeter yard, so not a buffer, but a standard perimeter yard, keeping the existing trees and supplementing where they see it might be a good idea. Sometimes when you grade nearby and drip lines, and this is the thing that I asked Mr. Barbie, if he were here to be prepared to help me answer, because I don't understand all the details of tree preservation, but I did want him here if you did have questions. We did have questions about the buffer along the north, along the north property line. There are easements as well, there's drainage, there's utility easements, and so we want to make sure that, if you're heavily relying on landscaping to screen the area, that the plan is actually going to work in that area. So staff has asked for a masonry wall or fence pretty consistently, and so they're coming to you and asking for you to consider a different option. I have some images in the packet, the one that's in our staff comments, this is a view from Florence Road. You can see, you can look down to the site, see the entire site. And the architect prepared some images that I think were pretty helpful. The one that I have on the screen now is at the end of the cul-de-sac in the townhomes. The top image, you can see it's flat, and you can see all the way across the property, so it's pretty flat, and you can see for a while. What they're proposing, of course, is, this is the landscape and the TVA easement, and then a stormwater pond and a storage. I think that this is a very visible area, and I'm not quite convinced yet that the proposed screening is effective. And then on the next page, I have a picture of two of the single-family houses, looking at the property in the back. The property is the one with the higher grass. And then the sketch on the bottom, what the landscape architect did, which I think is, again, is helpful in showing the distance and the screening area, and you can see the house in the distance. And, of course, the trees illustrated would have been there for quite some time. So staff cannot support approval of the plans as submitted, based on the design of the outdoor storage area. As stated above, the plans do not demonstrate that the outdoor storage area is appropriately located, can be effectively screened from the neighboring communities and public rights-of-way, and conflicts with the location of-- of way, and conflicts with the location of the other screening elements within TVA easement, drainage easement and utility easements. If you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them. I do know that they'd like an opportunity to speak to you as well, and I think present some details that they think maybe I might have missed on the plan. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after their presentation.
I had one question, and I think you might have several more. Could you go back a couple? You've got like an aqua-blue outline around the property, that one right there. So the TVA easement is down on this far end, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was trying to see, exactly what's on the other side. So that's where the townhomes are? And is that the cul-de-sac or street in between?
That's a, yeah, that's a private drive that serves the townhomes.
Part of there.
And we've required it to be, have a turning radius for emergency service vehicles.
Okay.
And currently, there's an informal drive going from that across the property. That will be removed with the development of this property. I think, actually, with the development of phase one, it was committed to.
Okay. I know there's others that have questions, and I just will state before we move on that I'm extremely concerned about the lack of, you know, whatever type of berm or vegetation that we're seeing on the plan, and think there needs to be quite a bit more between both single-family residents and this storage area specifically for the vehicles. I think that would be.
While we-
I listened to everybody else.
While we have this map up, and I'm sorry to interject any-
No, go ahead.
-along what you're saying, can you give us a little crayon drawing of where that outdoor, where is that outdoor storage exactly from this view?
Around there.
Okay.
So Warren's not here, but if you listened to that meeting, he was very vocal about the, really, I mean, probably with respects to the residential, but he was pretty vocal about the view shed from whatever this road is, Florence Road. And so I don't know, and this question may be better, once the applicant gets up there, that they can talk about what that view shed's going to look like. Because I know that that was definitely one of his concerns. And then, so you mentioned Margaret Ann that the TVA would not or don't think that they would allow these higher or taller trees. What about, and you may not know the answer to this, but what about a fence? Is, could they have, would you think TVA would allow them to have a fence? And would there be a maximum height associated with the fence?
I did look up their policies on their website, which they have available, and of course have some history here. Even in areas where we've allowed trees to be built, Medical Center Parkway, TVA came through regardless of where it was and just cut every tree out within the vicinity. So even if we approve it, they may change their minds later, although I don't think they will approve the landscaping. But they did have some information on fences, and they said fences such as stone, brick, wrought iron and chain link may not be allowed. And so they don't make any kind of commitment that they would allow it either. It may be something that they don't allow, and some of it has to do with the type of line or the sag. Apparently, these lines sag more in summer than they do in winter, and they really look closely at the area. And of course, they can remove it in the future, even if they decide to allow it temporarily now, it may be that it becomes a problem later. So we, I tend to err on the side of make the site work without relying on what's in the TVA easement or these other easements, because we don't know yet what they will allow. I did have them put a note on the plan talking about it. And I would ask for evidence that TVA's approved it prior to permits, but at this point, I would really rather kind of figure this stuff out before it even goes to TVA, because sometimes when planning commissioner approves plans, they take them to TDOT or TVA or other agencies, it has the weight of, well, Murfreesboro Planning Commission wants this. And so I would rather them just make it a neutral decision, what is or isn't allowed, and then we can move from there and come up with a plan that works.
And do we know from looking at this, does the property line go approximately the center of the TVA easement? Or is the, I mean, usually they're like 150 feet or something, the whole TVA easement, so it could be all one side or the other?
This image shows that it, this is the TVA easement, and this is it, according to the information-
And the property lines along the road?
The property line is-
So if they had to put all of the landscaping on their property side of the easement, I mean, that would be-
Pushes that over.
Yeah, that'd just be, that'd just be what they'd have to do.
It probably would make sense.
That little funnel-shaped-
I'm sorry.
...piece, is that the buffer inside the easement? Do you see it?
Right here?
Yeah.
That is actually drainage. It's like a little, like, it's not a wet pond, so it's not like a pretty pond with a fountain, it's more like one of the big holes in the ground, I guess.
Well, where would the, then where is the, is the actual buffer just right along the property line then? I apologize, I'm-
There you go.
So it's all in the easement?
It is.
Yeah.
And that's an existing buffer or a buffer that they've got drawn in?
They would plant it.
They're proposing.
Yeah, they're proposing to plant it and to have a vinyl fence, a six-foot vinyl fence.
How tall of a masonry wall are you proposing instead of the vinyl fence?
So I, so what I like to do is say, this is really important. When you leave, I want you to know it's really important to me, please come up with a solution to it. And so I've said that a few times, and it's really not the desire to do one yet, so I think they wanted to come to you and talk to you about it, and maybe come back with something. So I'd like for them to propose something that they think that works. I think you can look at the topography, and you can look at different types of fencing. It doesn't, I know, I didn't say it needs to be a brick wall, you know, there's something that the Swanson family has done where they had some concrete molded fences or walls. It could be a combination of elements. And I tell people with development in Murfreesboro, we want future development not only to not negatively impact the existing communities, but if they can make it better in any way, we look for opportunities to do that. And I think having some sort of solid wall there would even help the houses that live here with sound that may come from, because this is 840 and 24, so it's a heavily traveled corridor. And so if they could do something in their design that not only mitigated the negative impacts of having an outdoor storage area in your backyard or your side yard, but also maybe make the quality of life for the residents a little better along the way, we often do that times with drainage. And so I would like, if it could be a win-win in that situation, that would be helpful.
All right, I got one more question, sorry. Just to make sure I got my bearings right on this. You had that other, that other picture up that had the actual satellite image, I think you said it was like an aqua line or something like that around it?
I've got you.
That's it.
Sorry. Yeah, that right there. So I think Ken said maybe something about Florence Road, but I think Florence Road, it's way up here at the top of the page, not even on the page.
This is Florence Road?
Yeah, so this is the actual exit from the, yeah, from, this is going from eighth-
This is going from 840 to 24.
Four.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm-
The thing about Florence Road is there's a bridge there, and so you can really see the site, like really see it.
From Florence Road. And I'm really, I can't, I have to kind of think through how visible this is from this on-ramp or whatever, but is the applicant is going to come up and speak with us beforehand? I'm going to make this clear on the front end of this, so you might be able to address this in your, I had a phone call about this a couple weeks ago, only had to do with the masonry wall. One of the things that was specifically said to me was that this was not visible from the interstate, you know, 840, I-24. It looks like it's real visible to me, and I guess I want to make sure I'm on the right track. There's a lot of other factors, let me frankly say, there's a lot of other factors to this that I think need to be addressed other than the masonry wall. I mean, I will address the masonry wall too, but for the applicant, there's a lot of other things that need to be, I had no idea that it's not even in the code to allow outdoor, outdoor storage right next to houses. That wasn't told to me by the applicant when I was on the phone. All we were talking about was fussing about a masonry wall versus doing some landscape. So for what it's worth, I need some information on that.
And the view shed was discussed a lot at our last meetings as well, and you asked for some sketches from them, and the architect worked on some. So the topography next to the ramp, it's not completely flat, there is a little change in elevation, but it 100% will be visible. Now, it's not as visible as you might think, in some of these renderings, the distance isn't really quite accurate reflecting that. But the architect did provide some, some information. Now, when you know development goes into it, also grades and clears and puts in drainage ponds that weren't there, because there's going to be a drainage pond next to the townhomes, there's going to be drainage ponds in the southwest, southwest corner. So there's going to be work that changes what you see now. It's not, phase two is much more visible than phase one was, and I think that's what we recognized last year.
Okay.
And the relationship with the residential is an important component as well.
I'm out there all the time, so I'll definitely go by there and try to at least get a little bit of a feel for what's to see from that exit.
They were proposing chain link along the interstate, and I asked if it were going to be something like that, maybe to be the decorative aluminum that they're using in some areas, like along Florence, which probably is a pretty easy change. And of course, TDOT would, and TDOT would have to require the fencing in addition to TVA in that area.
Okay, any other questions before we hear from the applicants or developers?
I will say, I have a lot of issues with the outdoor storage. I have even more issues that the outdoor storage is located, some of it is located in the TVA easement. TVA easements serve a purpose, and I don't see the TVA going for outdoor storage inside of their easement. But I just feel like this is a lot of outdoor storage backing up to a lot of homes. And like you said, there are ways to maybe increase the quality of life for those homeowners, but as proposed, I'm not sure how I feel about those.
We're going to have a public hearing, right?
There's no public hearing. This is a public meeting, you discuss it, you can make a motion today to deny the plan, you can make a motion to approve the plan as submitted, you can make a motion to conditionally approve it, which I would probably ask that you not do that, that if you wanted something changed, you would have it come back to you, or you can ask them to come back with changes however you say. So, I mean, there's lots of options, but that's how I narrow it down.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you very much.
We'll hear from the developers. Mr. Huddleston, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones, members of the Planning Commission, thank you. I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering. We are the engineers for phase two of this project. We were not the engineers for phase one. We're here today to ask for relief from the masonry wall request. I'm going to let Greg Gamble, our landscape architect, ask him to make a short presentation to show why our solution for buffering and screening is better than using a masonry wall. I believe this will address not only Margaret Ann's concerns, but the ones Chair Jones and Warren's concerns also. I will state, there was, for example, mention of sound. Sound travels in a straight line. So if you put a fence up, the sound's got to go over the fence, it's not going to bend back down to the houses. So it doesn't matter whether it's masonry or vinyl, the fence does, the sound's going to be the same. TDOT will not have a dog in this hunt. TDOT has their own kind of fencing, and they, their fencing that's on the project now on the southwest line is in the wrong place. We worked with the original developer many years ago to get that right-of-way approved so that they are going to be, the developers already been in contact with TDOT about moving their fence. They will have their own access restricting fence like they always do along the right-of-way, and then we'll have our fence also along with the landscape buffering. We will be checking in with TVA as we always do, once we get approval. As Margaret Ann stated, they'd rather, they're like TDOT, they'd rather wait and see what Planning Commission approves, and then they'll spend time reviewing it and making whatever recommendations or changes they might want to make. At this time, I'll introduce Greg Gamble, he's the landscape architect on this project. We do appreciate Margaret Ann's work on this, we have been back and forth with her a lot, and I'm, but I'm going to let Greg provide his presentation on our buffering and screening at this point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Huddleston.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you, commissioners. My name is Greg Gamble, I'm the landscape architect. We've got a handout that we want to give you just to provide a little bit of additional clarification and some information. I believe we brought copies for staff as well. I believe we brought copies for staff as well.
Thank you.
Do you mind showing me how I can flip to previous page?
The mouse or the right?
I'd like to start here with the landscape plan. Along the 840 ramp, here at the bottom, you see plant material that's slightly ghosted out. You can also see it on the first page of the handout we just gave you there. It's this dark area here. That area is existing trees, existing plant material. It's made up of hackberries, cedars, and some cherry laurel.
Can I stop you right there?
Yes, sure.
Is that in line with the TDOT fencing today? And would that have to be removed if TDOT has to move the fence?
That is not the location of the fence that would be moved.
All right.
There is a fence there for TDOT, but it would remain.
Okay.
In this particular location, this material is on a berm that sits approximately six feet higher than the ramp. Now, the ramp does start changing and going up in elevation at this location. Here at the end, this plant material here would be removed, and this fence would be relocated off the property on the TDOT right-of-way. In this particular location, we have supplemental landscape material to be added. You can see on this sheet L 2.0 that includes magnolias, as well as six-foot mature height shrubs along that fence row. In just a moment, Paul Bass is going to show you perspective renderings that were taken with the correct elevations from the ramp looking back into the site. We are convinced that with the additional landscape material that we're adding in this location, as well as the position of the buildings, the exterior storage will be screened from view from this elevated bridge and elevated site. We've got some photographs that were included in our submittal package that we'll show you in just a minute. So, Phase One is grayed out at the north of the property, and as stated, is the access right off of Santana. In this section, we have a vinyl fence or vinyl wall that is alongside the eastern boundary. On the western boundary of Phase One, we have a metal picket fence. We would like to propose to extend that same vinyl, six-foot fence alongside the northern boundary of Phase Two. The type D buffer is required in the adjacent to the last seven single-family lots that are shown going to the east. It's required to be 15 foot in depth, or width, excuse me. We have a shared 20-foot drainage easement on that property line. So, 10 foot on our side, 10 foot on the residential homeowner's side. We have an additional five feet that we're adding in that location for the landscape buffer. So, our buffer will be 20 feet and include the drainage easement. Our landscape is outside of that drainage easement, so it'll be in that additional 10 feet. If you look at the handout, on the very last page, we have an example of a green arborvitae, which in this photograph is 22 feet in height. These are the fastest growing trees, evergreen trees, that we have typically here in middle Tennessee. They grow at a rate of three to four foot per year, as long as they're provided irrigation, which they will be a part of our plan. We also have eastern red cedars, hollies, or foster hollies, and sweet bay magnolias that are a part of this landscape buffer to create some variety. You can see here at the bottom, we've got an example of a vinyl fence, six-foot vinyl fence, at a growth rate of the arborvitae is between three and four feet per year. They should be at a height of between 13 and 14 feet in a three-year period. So, this 22-foot arborvitae that you see a gentleman standing next to is about a four to five-year tree. And so, we believe that this is a much softer application of landscape buffer with a little bit more space than is required adjacent to the rear yards of these homeowners. Underneath the TVA line, then, looking back at this sheet L 2.0, TVA provides a plant list of plant material that's acceptable within their easements. They do not want plant material that has mature heights greater than 16 feet. So, in this area, we have doubled the required landscape plants. We have specified mountain laurels, cherry laurels, and anis trees, which are readily available in the industry here in middle Tennessee. As evergreen plant material within that TVA easement, it will not grow taller than 16 feet. It again is on TVA's approved plant list and would be an appropriate planting in this location. We do have supplemental landscape that we're providing along 840. And if you look at page three of this submittal, I'm sorry, page two. Wait, let me make sure I'm telling you the right page. Yeah, page three. This shows a photograph taken from that ramp, looking directly at the outdoor storage area. So, this is the existing condition. This is what it is going to look like. Paul, do you mind coming up? Do you know what page that's on?
840.
I'll give you these two.
Great. My name is Paul Bass, architect consortium. We were the architect on the first phase, and as a part of the strategy, what we did on Phase One was actually bringing in the building design and dropping it into Google Earth and taking actual real views. So, this will give you an idea of what you're looking at. For instance, the view that Greg was referring to was camera five, which you'll see in the lower left-hand corner, and that is looking from the own ramp into the development. And that kind of corresponds to the graphic that he showed on the previous image. And you're starting to see between the landscaping, and then we're probably at about a two-year development, but we've also got that existing growth and infrastructure in place, and you're starting to see a little of the existing, or the Phase Two buildings on that. For instance...
Can I ask you a question on that just while, before you leave camera five there?
Mm-hmm.
Looks like the right-hand buildings are taller than the left-hand building, or buildings? Is that, am I, you see what I'm kind of looking at there?
So, yes, so the, I would say at max, the larger buildings, they probably cap out at about 16 feet above finished floor at the parapet.
All right. And then, so the RVs are going to, are not showing on here, like?
No, we do not have actual vehicles modeled in there.
All right. But that's going to be on farther to the right?
Correct.
Just the two buildings that we see there? Is that?
Yes, so camera four would give you a perspective, looking in lower right-hand corner, of getting into that view of where you would see potentially the RV parking. And that's again where the, we've got the screening from the landscape package.
That looks lower than the building, though. If I'm looking at that right, you're talking about the little, the little white top back in there?
Well, in the white, what you're seeing on the white, that's actually the top of the six-foot fence that you see kind of in the kind of lower right-hand corner. So, that gives you a perspective of what that six-foot line is.
I got you. So, I mean, I don't think that's what we're worried about. I think we're worried about the 20-foot tall RVs poking over the fence, right? Not just the fence itself.
And that would probably correspond to where, what we're showing those trees, because those trees are probably modeled in around 14 to 16 feet.
All right.
And then, we've also, any questions on this one? I can kind of show you the next slide we've got. And then, on 441, that's actually taking views from the north, looking in to the site, and that's actually picking up some of the Phase Two as well. And you can kind of see that it, just from the distance and overall, most of it's screened as referenced 09 and lower right-hand corner. Like you said, we're starting to get to the elevated corresponding views to where you're starting to get a more look into the site, but primarily, everything from the south looking north is screened either the buffer or the landscape.
I would think so, yeah. Right.
And that's just some overall views.
Yeah. Will you go back to that one, the one before that?
Mm-hmm. So, the top view is actually looking at Phase Two, looking to the southeast corner. So, the larger building is what I call Building D, and then the two buildings there in the center actually mimic the two buildings that we had approved in Phase One. Those are the two outdoor storage, and we actually faced those to the conditioned buildings just to conceal the outside access doors. And then, we have the larger building that you see to the east. And if you look at that top image, you can start to get, see the surface parking for the outdoor storage at the top left-hand corner.
Yeah. All right, just so I'm clear on this, I'm sorry, the elevation is just, that doesn't make it look like that, that northern building is taller. Are all the buildings the same height?
I would say the two in the center are sitting roughly at around 11 foot four to 12 oh because of the unconditioned height, because of the ridge line, because we've got a 1 to 12 slope on those standing seam roofs. That's the ones that we ended up screening with parapets, just so you would not see the standing seam roof. So, we, unlike building or Phase One, we were screened with parapets probably roughly 20 to 30% of the buildings. On these buildings, since they were a little more prominent, we ended up taking a parapet around the, almost the entire facility, just to give you a look of more of a Class A building versus seeing a standing seam.
I got you. So, it's 16 feet tall to the top of that and to the top of the?
Right. That way, we're covering that ridge. You got it. So, we're covering the ridge up completely.
I got you.
Here's my thoughts on the masonry wall. Whether you're doing a masonry wall, a vinyl fence, as long as solid-state, I mean, unless you're building a 15-foot tall masonry-style wall to cover up these RVs, where you're not seeing the RVs, it's not really going to matter whether it's vinyl or wood or whatever. It's still going to, you're still going to see the top of those RVs from the houses. And if I'm living in one of those houses, I don't want a 15 or 20-foot tall masonry wall behind my, where it looks like I'm living beside a prison. Now, that's a whole different discussion about whether I want outdoor storage, but I'm just talking about the idea of the, the actual masonry wall or a fence. I think I would rather have the vegetation and a six-foot fence than what it would take to cover up those RVs as far as the height of a masonry wall it would take.
But you put the vegetation on the outside of the fence, basically, on the residential side of the fence.
Yeah.
Then the fence.
Yes.
Yeah, the only, I mean, look, the thing that's, I mean, the downside of the, of the evergreens is that they, they get more narrow right where you kind of, right where I think we're trying to really cover up, you know? It leaves, it is softer, and it's softer in terms of, it's got big gaps in it that you're still going to be looking into it. So, it's all, so I guess, were we talking about a taller 12, 15, 20-foot tall?
Yes.
So, I didn't give an opinion on the height of the wall. Early on, of course, brought it up and wanted to have that conversation, but I don't think they were interested in talking about that conversation. Mr. Huddleston did a sound study for us one time, you know, I've been here a long time, for a Sonic on Fortress Boulevard, because there were multiple-story apartments next door in a Sonic, which each little unit has a speaker. And so, my concern, the President of Planning Commission, was quality of life of people with their balconies and patios who sit out there. And I think the solution for that area was, I remember he drew an illustration showing sound and how it travels, and so they did a berm and fence on top of the berm to help with that height, so that maybe it wasn't like a exceedingly high wall or fence, but it also raised the height of the landscaping at its initial construction. When I reviewed this, I thought with those footnotes in the zoning ordinance, if they weren't written for this situation, I don't know what they were written for, honestly. And so, the options were berms, masonry walls, or fences, and I really wanted to see an effort in that direction. And so, I mean, I think they probably could come up with different design solutions without just doing a wall that tall. And we talked about sound that would come from industrial development off of, I guess it backs up to some of the houses off of Manchester Pike. Masonry was considered a better material to help with those sounds that would travel, even if they do travel straight, it would actually be a material that would help absorb or deflect those sounds. So, I was taking my experience here and applying it. I didn't say that they needed a 15-foot wall. I wanted to have the conversation, but hadn't had that yet.
Well, Mr. Huddleston's an engineer, and I'm not, but I can tell you, from apartments that I used to live in, some walls are not equal to others. So, I'm just saying, masonry versus plastic, I'm just saying it might be different, but all right, I'm listening. I'm trying to learn.
I wasn't coming at it from a sound point of view. I'm looking at it from just a totally aesthetic point of view.
That too, for sure. I get it, yeah.
Y'all, do y'all have more to present?
Couple of comments, and since we're bringing up history.
Don't go back too...
Anything about the apartment stuff.
Don't go back too far.
Well, in that, in that situation, I think we were talking about a, some sort of fast food restaurant that had a, you know, had a ordering mechanism there, and we were talking about a three-story apartment. So, we were, we were worried about the apartment people hearing that. That's not what we're talking about here. We were talking about screening and buffering from, from outdoor storage and from, to the east, because of what Ms. Jones correctly identified, between the TVA easement and our detention pond, we're 200 feet from any residences. So, you know, a previous planning director taught me a lot of things, some of them I didn't want to know, but one thing he did teach me was that distance is the best buffering.
So, is there any difference between the buffer over there in the easement versus what's on the side of the exit versus what's on the side? I mean, there's all kind, you know, it, this is all happening kind of fast, and you're talking east, west, north, south, and bouncing around. I just want to make sure, I think I got an idea of what you're proposing up next to the houses, which I think would be north, maybe?
Yeah, it's north.
North, okay.
And it's a type D buffer, so it's required, there are specifications that have to be met, including evergreen. We agreed with you about the tapered forms. And so, we've introduced a mixture of evergreen plant material, including red cedars, which are typically bulbous in shape, as well as sweet bay magnolias, which have more of a columnar form, but don't taper at the top, because we did want to create some variety and some visual interest, and we didn't want it to feel as though it was repetitive and soldiered. Now, the plants will be no greater than 10 feet apart, which is going to help kind of fill that area in significantly.
And is that the same thing that you're proposing along the east boundary?
Sure. So, on the east boundary, that's within the TVA easement. It cannot be taller than 16 feet. We had to pick plant material off of TVA's website to use. In those particular locations, we have mountain laurels, cherry laurel, and anis that are evergreens that are selected off their website. They are planted at twice the planting requirement for a type D buffer. In all locations, the fence is on the inside, so the fence is, is on the storage side, the landscape's on the outside. So, we're going to have to have maintenance gates located through so they can go out, weed eat, mulch, and maintain outside of those, those gates. Alongside the 840 ramp, we have the existing trees that are being preserved on the south. And then, where the trees are dark on this sheet L 2.0, we have a mixture of shrubs that grow to six feet in height and southern bay magnolias along that edge to provide that additional screening. Once we get up to where the commercial retail parcel is, that becomes Phase One, and so we're picking up with the already-approved landscape in those locations.
In Phase One, where Phase One backs up to the houses, what exactly is right there?
That's, that's a landscape, additional landscape buffering.
No fence?
There is a fence. The vinyl fence is already approved as a part of Phase One, six-foot.
Six-foot vinyl fence?
Yes.
All right. I think, I'm going to just try to get this out, and then hopefully try to be quiet. But it seems to me like along where the indoor storage is, the regular storage units, that the buffer that you're requesting looks pretty reasonable. It was already approved in Phase One. It would be very consistent, these back up to houses, these back up to houses, right?
Certainly.
Keep that all the same. You get to the outdoor storage and build a berm that goes down along here, that raises that, those bushes and fence up. And it just has to stretch this far that covers up the outdoor fence of the outdoor storage. And then, I still got to figure out what's going on with the view from, from the interstate, but I mean, that just seems like layup, I mean, kind of stuff.
Is there a maximum height you're trying to reach?
I think we want to cover as much as the 16 to 20-foot tall stuff. I mean, I can visualize, like, I can tell you right now, going down Murfreesboro Road, you go, right as you come into Smyrna, there's, right to the right, I mean, the reason that that pops into my mind is because it catches your eye. Giant, you know, bunch of RV, the big tall barn-looking things, that, you know, it catches your eye, right? And so, I mean, that, that certainly brings to me a little bit of, you know, anxiety might be a little strong word, but I mean, it certainly makes me question whether or not that's something that I would want right behind my house. There's, you know, this is probably the reason why we have said we don't want outdoor storage next to residents, you know, residential neighborhoods. So, we got to kind of, I feel like you have to go kind of above and beyond. So, I don't know, as much as we can get, this cover, I mean, I don't know the perfect number. I just think that that kind of becomes a layup, that you got to get that better than a six-foot fence with a bunch of gaps in it that don't really cover a whole lot of what I think everybody thinks we should be trying to cover up. And I agree with Bill. It's not like we're trying to cover up squawk boxes out of restaurants. I mean, you know, the sound thing, I think, is just an ancillary benefit or, you know, come or go, that those residents are already dealing with the sound from the interstate. So, that's, you know, that's not that big of a deal unless you're backing up dump trucks that have the big beep on it and all that kind of stuff, in which case, it becomes a real problem. And I guess I might as well say, from the standpoint of approving this at the council level, if we even have to, I don't even know, but at this level, once we get to a point of a, of a, a public hearing and approving it, we probably need to have something there that limits those backup reverse beeps and stuff like that, or I don't know.
This is just site plan approval. There's not going to be a public hearing, or it's not going to council. It's just plan.
So, before, I guess before I would approve it, then, if we're all, maybe come, if other people think we need to come back with some of these other thoughts, then I'd be real concerned about that as it sits right now, of whether or not, you know, how they're going to use the storage, that kind of thing.
I think, shut up. Go ahead.
So, Mr. Huddleston, so you don't have to get up. In the past, I can remember, like, when we were looking at Embassy Suites, we'll use that as an example. And we had a little guy standing 100 feet away, and you saw, you got to see a view shed of exactly what that six-foot tall gentleman would see in his backyard, and I'm just using Embassy Suites as an example, okay? Can we get that with this? Is there a way to, I know you've tried, but can we get where, if I'm standing in these people's backyards, what am I seeing? What, what is my view shed based upon, you know, Rick's example of doing the berm and the fence, and then what we're seeing from 840? If I'm driving down 840, what, what does my view shed look like? I know you've tried to do that with these pictures, but it doesn't, it doesn't do it for me, if that makes any... for me, if that makes any sense at all.
And by the way-
The landscape architect tried to do it, and that's the bottom image I have here. You can see, the property is very flat, so you're not going to see a lot of change in elevation, but this image is what they've, when I asked for that perspective rendering to help communicate to you, this is what they've provided to us.
Yeah.
But you mean even further.
That assumes that the RV is parked 15 feet away from the fence.
Right, and-
You still don't get a view, that's, y'all understand what I'm asking?
We, there are five of the seven homes that have backyard fences today that are six feet tall. So, and maybe I'm not understanding what you're asking, but we went and took photographs down the street, trying to figure out how to get that view. We really just couldn't produce anything that was successful in telling that story, but we're certainly happy to keep working on it.
I know what you're talking about.
Well, I mean, you could do it from 840, you would think.
Maybe there's a combination of Paul's Google map and some-
I remember another one that we did was the berm that was built at Clary Park. Remember the people coming out of West Lawn or whatever? They had the same exact thing, they had a little person there and-
Right, that's, yeah.
They kind of, all it did was place a person right beside that house right there and draw a straight line across the top of that fence and see where it intersects with the RV, right?
I mean, I think we're past the sound, it's the site, or whatever that's worth.
I did, with staff, of course, you know, we talked about the plant materials being different for the two buffers. One, all of the buffers in the easement, which is a concern alone. Additionally, even if you can plant it, it might be cut down, and then what? And in addition to that, our city horticulturist has concerns with some of the plant material proposed. Some of those laurels do good in East Tennessee, they don't do so well here. They require a different soil type than we tend to have here, and so the material in that would be a concern as well as presented today, so it was something I said I would bring up.
And can I ask then, so you're more concerned about the TVA easement side? That's where you're concerned?
I think I'm concerned with all of it. The TVA doesn't make sense to me, I don't understand what they're asking there, because it doesn't seem like there's a real solution proposing a buffer and a TVA easement. It seems like the solution would be that it would not be located in that easement. I'm also concerned with the homes that back up to it, because backing up to a building is different than backing up to outdoor storage. And we can request notes be placed on the site plan, but then who enforces that? I mean, we do now have a staff member who enforces zoning violations, but say you're returning your boat on a Sunday, or your RV, and you're working on it, there's no real way to enforce it, even if there's a note on there, you have to catch them, you have to document it, you have to ultimately take them to Judge Sellers.
Now, Margaret Ann, you're switching to the north side now.
So both of them. I think we have concerns with both sides, honestly, because the single-family, you're backing up to this, it's very flat, you'll absolutely see an RV 10 to 14 feet tall. And then also, the buffer along the townhomes, that just doesn't feel like a viable solution.
And this is for RV, boat, there were four things?
RVs, boats, trailers, and cars.
Any height limit?
And I wonder if there's some way we could say that the RV storage is limited to the interstate side of this, and the boats and cars and trailers can be parked up against the residents?
I would ask Mr. Ives and Mr. Blomley, the zoning ordinance names those as specific things that are allowed. If the Planning Commission approves outdoor storage, you may not approve it, it's up to you, but I would ask maybe David and Matthew if they think that that would be something we could do. I mean, I think that you can design it, right? If you shorten the spaces so that you can't get anything else in there, then that might be a solution.
I would need, want to spend a little time looking at the ordinance before I answer that, however, I would say that saying it is one thing and enforcing it on Sunday is something else, and, or any given day. I don't particularly like the idea of setting up rules that we, that are basically unenforceable, and that would be difficult to do.
Expensive to enforce, yeah. And this is all uncovered outdoor storage, right? I'm so loud, I don't need a microphone, let's be honest. It's all uncovered outdoor storage.
This is uncovered outdoor storage.
We don't have like sheds underneath, over me, over the RVs or anything.
Initially, they proposed RV washing area, but that was in violation of some of our ordinances, and we asked them to remove that, remove that space, and integrate it, and get rid of the drain, so now it does not have any structures.
And no waste dump or anything, I assume?
There's none shown on the plans.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Huddleston, you had another comment you'd like to make?
I did.
Do you have a shadow?
You do.
I think we've had a lot of good discussion today, and you've given us a lot of things to consider, and a lot of things to look at and work on a little more, so I think we'd like to ask for a deferral, and we'll continue to work with staff and continue to work on concerns that you brought up today, and we'll be back with you.
Can I mention one more thing, just to make sure? The only, you know, like I said, the berm deal against the houses seems like a layup to me, and honestly, I'm going to just have to say this, just so it's no surprise to anybody, I mean, pushing that boundary this direction, and that comes to a little bit of that distance thing, and honestly, I just don't want to be sitting here arguing over something that I don't even know if the TVA is going to go along with, and we sit here and we've gone through all this stuff, and then the TVA doesn't do it, and we've argued over it for nothing.
I got one word about that.
All right.
People don't realize it, I've got, I designed the Bonefish Shopping Center with a TVA tower right in the middle of it. I've got landscaping all over that thing. It works great, it looks great.
Let me correct him. TVA came and cut down a bunch of that landscaping at Bonefish, but we do, I know you don't-
Not around the tower, not around the tower.
So much landscaping's gone now because of the TVA easement, so that's a good example of a bad example.
All right, so I guess I'm still, I'm still a little, you know, I'm trying to look at this and try to extrapolate how many RV parking spaces that cuts out if you move it further to the west, and I recognize that it's a few, a handful.
But that might be the answer.
Let's just make this a lot easier than not happening at all. And it seems like that would be something that would be, can't, I mean, and this was, Margaret Ann, for clarification, the outdoor storage was not in the initial plan for this whole thing, or it was?
Absolutely no outdoor storage has, was shown in the zoning book in 2003, and absolutely no outdoor storage was shown on the master plan approved last year, and it is something being proposed now. So we were taking it on its face value as it being a request, and taking it to you, and just trying to mitigate those adverse impacts. And so, the fact that it's not listed as permitted use in the zoning ordinance was a question. So we got the planning director at the time, 2018, to say that self-storage service facility is a use that's permitted. I was under the impression that the outdoor storage would be a part of that, but if you think that we need to reinvestigate that, we can look and see if maybe that isn't actually a use that's allowed, based on that interpretation by the planning director in 2018. But I was just moving under that, I guess, that impression that it might be allowed, based on whatever you decide.
Okay, we need a deferral.
Questions you guys got? I'm going to make a motion.
Motion to defer.
Second.
Motion to defer and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all very much. Thanks for all this discussion. We will move on to new business. We're going to be scheduling some public hearings. We're going to start out. Item A is a zoning application for approximately 8.4 acres, located along Bridge Avenue, to be rezoned from RS 10 to CF, and approximately one acre to be rezoned from HI to CF. City Church is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Good afternoon again, Chair and Commission. As you see on the map, that is on the display, the project site involves three parcels that all currently front Bridge Avenue. All three of those parcels have existing single-family dwelling structures on it, and are zoned RS 10 in this northerly portion of the site, and a very small portion HI is designated to the south. We have received an application for rezone for this property for City Church. Normally, BZA would be the body that most churches go to for a church use, but for this particular case, due to some financing and some other constraints, the applicant had asked for a bulk zone district for CF. So in looking at that particular one, our general plan does designate the area as a general commercial district, which we would support, but we do ask that you set the public hearing for your next meeting, which would be the October 13th Planning Commission meeting.
If there are no questions, I make a motion, set the public hearing on October 13th. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Sorry, hold on a minute. We may be scheduling an all-day deal on October 13th.
Then you get to spend all night here, too. It's our public hearings, we're talking about 6:00 PM?
We amended the Planning Commission calendar a couple of months ago, because our October 6th regular meeting date was during fall break, and we didn't want to have public hearings the date, or the week of fall break, so we pushed that back a week to October 13th.
Okay, okay.
So it'll be at 6:00 PM?
At 6:00, yeah.
Rest up.
So the 13th at 6:00?
So, we had a motion and a second, so all in favor state aye. Aye. Any opposed? No, no, thanks for clarification. Okay, next, item B is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 2.4 acres, located south of South Rutherford Boulevard. James Allen Husky is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
As you can see on your video screen above, the area shaded in purple on this aerial photography is a existing parcel that is outside city limits, but is surrounded on all sides by the city, with the exception of the CSX Main Line Railroad spur. For this particular project, the applicant was working on some other site plan issues. Staff brought this up as we'd like to get this cleaned up, so we are looking at having an annexation of this piece, which would ultimately be, and still is currently being used on a regular basis by Husky Trust, which is the applicant for this, James Allen Husky. And we'd like to ask that we set April 13th for your annexation consideration, where we will provide a plan of services for this project site.
Carrie, any questions? Just need a motion for a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Item C is the zoning application for approximately 2.4 acres, located south of South Rutherford Boulevard, to be zoned heavy industrial simultaneous with annexation. James Allen Husky is the applicant.
So this is the companion site to the annexation item that you just heard, and in looking at the site, actually, to the north, to the east, and to the south is currently zoned HI, with, again, the Rutherford County does not have any zoning designation for the CSS Main Line, so they are looking at a HI simultaneous with that annexation, which, again, we believe is appropriate in this site, and actually, our general plan does designate that area as light industrial, but again, we believe we would support that because it ties into the other existing uses around that area. And with that, we would like to ask that you set the public hearing for this item on October 13th as well.
Okay, any questions?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, item D is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 15.6 acres, located north of Dejarnet Lane. Calvary Baptist Church is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
So this annexation, as you can see on the above map, is located, this is the existing Dejarnet Lane, and 431 Dejarnet, the existing Calvary Baptist Church, has a parcel that's located directly in back of it, that is outside city limits. We're looking at that for a annexation. The current access to the site is, there is Walton Lane that dead-ends into the backside of the parcel currently, and it is surrounded by predominantly residential uses to the west and the north, and vacant uses on the opposite sides. They are looking at a companion zoning that will be the next item, but for this point, we would like to look at setting the public hearing for October 13th for this particular annexation.
Okay, any questions?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Can I, wait, Ms. Smith, there seems to be, I remind, I'm just trying to just remember how this goes, was there, is there a policy in place regarding new annexations for churches, religious establishments, anything like that? I mean, do we, I kind of remember that maybe we're generally not doing that, is that-
Well, I know that when we do look at annexations, we do look at what is surrounding, and as you can see on this particular map, is this area due, east of the site is county, but then you'll notice that it is surrounded by the city here, so it's connected to a contiguous existing county island, but they are submitting it concurrently with a PND request, which our zoning ordinance does allow for an annexation and a rezone request to be run concurrently. But I'm not familiar with any other annexation policies.
Okay.
Mr. LaLance, I think we, in the past, have discussed reaching out to bring land into the city that, you know, it's not going to generate tax revenue, it's just going to cost us to maintain and serve, but we're looking at an infill, something that's already an island, part of an island that's completely surrounded by the city, and think we're, for some development on this property that, as a practical matter, is in the city.
Is it for soon?
Probably should be handled by the city rather than developed by the county. I think we would, I think certainly staff would feel that this development, that as a practical matter is in the city, should be handled by the city.
And one thing that I might add, Mr. LaLance, is that the northern portion of the property that's proposed to be annexed is not included in the plan development, that, and Mr. Taylor can confirm his conversations with the church, that it, that is to be left RS 15 for potential future residential development. Mr. Taylor, can you confirm that?
So, I can't confirm it for future residential development, I can say that the church did not want to sell that for this particular project, and so they don't know what they want to do with that, but it, you know, staff asked us to go ahead and include that extra area whenever we're including the area of the project, so-
So it doesn't make up that whole area right there?
No, sir, it does not. And you'll see whenever we get to the plan development that we really split, part of the project's in the part that already has city, that's already in the city, and part of it is in the part with the county. And I think the reason the whole piece isn't in the county or in the city today is because it was a secondary piece that got purchased or donated a second time.
Gotcha. Okay, I'm, just didn't really know how to handle it, I wasn't real sure.
So I think we have a motion and a second for a public hearing on October 13th for item D. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Item E will be the companion zoning application for approximately 9.5 acres, located north of Dejarnet Lane, to be rezoned from RS 15 to PND, Providence Christian Academy Athletic Facility PND, and approximately 9.5 acres to be zoned PND simultaneous with annexation. Providence Christian Academy is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Last item for this afternoon for me. As you can see on the attached map above, it may help explain a little bit of the question that was just brought up, the PND portion of the application for, this is a- The PND portion of the application for, this is a companion with the annexation you just considered. This whole area to the north is that area, can you see the cursor? The whole area to the north here, I don't circle very well, it looks like. Let me clear. It's the button. Thank you. I'm not going to try that again. So with my cursor, the area in tan is the area that's outside the city limits currently. The plan development is actually proposed for a portion of that annexation area as well as an existing portion of the parcel that's due south of it. The area is actually currently zoned RS 15 in the city and RM, medium density residential in the county, and is surrounded by single-family dwelling units to the west and the north as well as vacant land being to the opposite sides. The Refreeze Borough General Plan for the property shows the site as suburban residential. This yellow area represents the rough PND area, which, again, you can see bisects two separate parcels. So the intent would be to ultimately have three separate parcels after, if it's all approved and moves forward with the suburban residential district in the general plan. Generally, you would see a, use my place. The suburban residential district is generally for single-family residential zones of RS 15, RS 12, RS 10. But it does also look at planned developments for housing types. Really, it matches more of our plan, public institutional class of land use. In looking at it in the past, suburban residential land uses are not specifically called out as institutional uses as a compatible use. But in most cases, we have seen PND type uses approved through the BZA, special uses. And we do think that portion is in line. Staff would like to mention, and it was not mentioned in the staff report, that a neighborhood meeting was held for the property notifying the neighbors and was held back on August 30th with about 20 neighbors signing into the project. The concerns that they had brought up at the time were how was drainage being handled, potential traffic at Walton, which is the street that currently stubs into the west of the project site. They were also bringing up lighting, whether or not it would be on all night or not. How was student crossing Dejarnet from the existing PCA campus to this site going to be handled? And then lastly, wanted to know if this was all that the PCA was proposing at this time. As you can see, again, the area to the far north is considered RS 15 just by the normal interim zoning. If it were annexed into the city, the red area would be part of that PND simultaneous with the annexation. And then the area in blue would be that current RS 15 that would be looking at going to a PND district. In looking at the existing sites and the surroundings, there is the existing Calvary Baptist Church on the frontage of Dejarnet with two existing roadway access points at the project site. The proposed project also has four flag lots to the west that are a little bit hard to see on the side, and then this very narrow vacant lot that only fronts onto Dejarnet. In looking at long-term, one of the things that we were able to go through on the project site is, and was provided to staff, and first I will apologize for not including the attachment of the program book. It was an oversight by staff. But we did provide hard copies as well as email copies. So hopefully, some of you had a chance to look at the booklet ahead of time. But one of the things that we were provided was what we call a pedestrian vehicular access, what is anticipated for the game. So when you're looking at the proposed site, the proposed site in the long-term includes a football field with a 1,600-seat stadium, which would be Phase 4 of their project is what's proposed. And with that proposal, what they are looking at is parking and providing it on three separate sites. So parking, that would be directly adjacent to the stadium as well as adjacent to the tennis courts on the site. The existing parking lots that are in the Calvary Baptist Church, which they are also currently expanding those parking structures and facilities. And between those two sites, that's about 489 spaces. And then across the street at the PCA campus being another 225 spaces on the south side of Dejarnet, which is a five-lane roadway. So as you'll notice in the staff report, we did highlight a couple of recommendations that we have been working on at staff level. The first one is that parking one. In looking at our current policy, at this point in time, we believe that the required parking should probably be provided all on the north side of Dejarnet so that, you know, again, we're not planning for the required parking to have to be served across the street at 1,300 feet away. Secondly, you'll notice in the packet, there are not any specific architectural elevations. There are some examples with some material types we would like to see about making sure that they meet the design guidelines and we continue to work with them to provide that. Because, again, we do not have those architectural elevations in hand at this point. And then the third, fourth, and fifth recommendations are listed on page three, which is first, to provide a more direct access on Dejarnet. So if I go to the site layout, which this is not in your program book, but this westerly drive approach here off of Dejarnet, we're looking at having a more straight approach so that it does not have to take a hairpin turn as you're going through the church's parking lot, but would be more direct. And that access to the church parking lot would then peel off of the main drive approach. The second proposed change that we have is on Walton, where it deadends into this area. Currently, it's proposed as a cul-de-sac, bulb cul-de-sac. So going into that a little bit further, what staff has requested is that instead of a bulb, that this be a T-intersection with asphalt coming to the north, similar to what's been happening, I believe, a project called Bishop, help me, Matthew Bishop?
Bishop Street.
That we have a similar issue where traffic is backed up onto the adjacent street here by providing that additional access and asphalt that would get any potential traffic that might use this onto the private site rather than spilling into the neighborhood. And then the other traffic-related issue is providing right-turn lanes at Dejarnet or other potential geometric lane modifications as determined by a traffic analysis. So the applicant is currently pulling a traffic analysis for what we call a peak-level event to basically look at how that affects the street circulation system when it comes to beds and vehicles, especially if you have to provide some of that parking from across the street. How is it going to affect those items? And then I think five items. Yeah, so first one was parking and its location. The second one is the elevations. And then the third, fourth, and fifth items were all traffic-related. So with that, the applicant is here for any questions. But today is just kind of a quick introduction into the project. Get some of your feedback to make sure that any concerns that have not been addressed here, if you want us to take a look at some further ones, that we would make sure to have those taken a look at for your future consideration. And at this point, we are tentatively wanting to set the public hearing date for October 13th. But as you'll notice in the staff report, we had put down that staff pending receipt of the traffic analysis. And some of these other items would generally be supportive if those documents show that it better meets and integrates with those areas. So with that, I don't know if Matt Taylor would like to add some additional items. And if you would like, would you like the site plan up?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you, Holly. Matt Taylor from SEC. And I think that for the most part, we're on the same page with staff on the roadway back toward Dejarnet, the driveway. We're going to smooth out one of those bends through there, so that's not a problem. We're going to take that cul-de-sac off, make it a hammerhead. And then we're in the process of gathering those trip generation numbers. And we'll do the right-turn lanes. We've already talked to, I think we already said we would do that. As far as architecture, we don't have an architect on staff. We have, we're willing to mimic the buildings after the buildings at the Miracle Field. We have stated we would change, I think those are maybe a smooth-faced block or split-face. We'll just use brick and stone on those to blend in with the surrounding residences better. And so we don't have any specific architecture. We would definitely meet the guideline, design guidelines when we get to the site plan. But our materials would change from what's shown in the book to a brick and stone. That's not a problem at all. And then the parking, I told Holly, we'll continue to work with staff on that. Our concern on adding parking on the north side of Dejarnet is we're talking about an event that might happen once a year. And, you know, we just didn't want to go add another sea of asphalt that costs money on the front side, we have to treat through stormwater, and is going to sit vacant most of the time. And so we do have a shared parking agreement with Calvary, and they can share hours if they need it. But we're, you know, 99% of all events are all going to be contained on the north side of Dejarnet. And so we're talking a special event, maybe like a homecoming event where everybody's mama and sister and brother are coming out to see the queen and king. And so it's not a weekly event. And even on the home football games, you're talking five or six games an entire year on a Friday night when your peak traffic events are low anyway. And so I was out there last night visiting with some neighbors about drainage. I was out there from approximately 4:00 to 6:00. There's very little traffic on Dejarnet Lane from, at that time of day. I'm sure Friday is akin to that as well. So we're not talking very much. We just didn't want to make that investment on the south, on the north side for something that's not going to get used. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I will say, that's the part I'm very, most concerned about is that parking. I don't want, I really don't want to have anything that would require it to have to use the south side. If there's the shared parking agreement with the church that would accommodate the four or five or six times a year that these, you know, the homecoming events, et cetera, would take place, if they can be accommodated within the church parking lot, then that would certainly seem to take care of that issue, but.
I think right now, we're at about 100, for those very extreme events, which is based on, I think we've asked for a maximum 1,600-seat capacity at the football field. And so that requires about just under 600 parking spaces on the site. And so between the two sites, between what we're proposing on this site plus what the church has, is about 550. So we're about 100, maybe it's 580. So we're about 100 spaces short. And so a normal home game, everything's going to be contained on this side. It's just that one event. And I think everybody probably has an empty issue or an Oakland or Riverdale-type mindset. You know, the entire school here has 900 kids in it. That's from pre-K all the way through 12. Oakland's graduate class is probably larger than that. I know Riverdale's was five years ago. So it's a much different environment, much different scenario than our larger public schools. It's just a much smaller, much different environment. For instance, right now, they're playing, is it seven or nine-man?
Eight.
Eight-man football. So it's not, they don't even have enough kids to fill a full football team right now. So it's a much different environment.
We have 700 in the school.
What did I say?
900.
Okay, I'm sorry. So we have 700 in the whole school.
And so when you tell, you're saying that the parking, the numbers you gave does include already using the church?
Yes, ma'am. Between the church and what we're proposing with the plan is approximately 580. We're required about 600, or sorry, 480. We're required about 590. So there's about 100 space short that in those, in an extreme event, would have to park at the school. For instance, I think they're already playing their home football games at the school. And then they're containing all of that on their existing property that has about 200 spaces today, 225, something like that. So that's a normal event for them.
I might have a question for staff on this, just kind of, just out of curiosity, if there, if there is an event, and, you know, frankly, I guess, hopefully, one of these days, the 1,600 is getting filled up. I suppose that's why they're making it 1,600. So, you know, you want to kind of go with that possibility, and we got to kind of go with that number in our mind. Is there anything in place as it relates to the city to, that, I mean, if they know there's going to be an event that needs traffic help or whatever, do we have anything in place that would deal with that? I mean, if it, you know, even if it's, let's say they have a concert over there. They want to have an outdoor concert at the football field, you know, stadium or something like that, that's not just this typical football.
That might be a question for our Transportation Division. I know when they do events that close streets, there's a process where you apply for and you give specifics about an event. But if you're not involving closure of a street, I don't know if we have any policy in place, but we can find that out and make sure to bring that back to y'all.
You know, we already have, I guess what I was thinking is, we already slow traffic down right there every single day, twice a day. You know, so we do, we have something in place already for school zones. I just didn't know if there was any event, if there's also something like that that can, that can be done or whatever that might make it a little easier.
Mr. LaLance, we have a, and I don't know for events at, at churches or schools, if this would, if this would be required. But we do have a special event permit process that starts with our Transportation Department, goes to our Police Department, and then goes to the City Manager's Office. And that is, the Transportation Department reviews those events for, for traffic complications. And the Police Department reviews them for, to see whether any additional manpower would be needed and if, and if they would need to focus their manpower on, you know, because on those events, there could be a large concentration of people, which may, you know, be, increase the need for resources in that area. But whether a, an existing assembly use would be required to get a special event permit for something on their campus, I don't, I don't know. It's a roundabout answer saying, I don't know.
Yeah, it's all right. I mean, I've been thinking, I don't even know. Obviously, I think a better answer would be if there, if there was going to be an event there that we knew was going to be underparked, that if we could somehow, I mean, I wouldn't want to keep the event from happening. I'm not trying to go there with this. I'm just trying to say, you know, how do we do it and make sure we do it safely and it's done safely without much kids running across Dejarnet, you know? I mean, and it, because sometimes it does get busy, a lot of times, so, and there, people go fast. So I guess I'm, you know, can we ask them to, you know, bus people over if there's going to be something like that? If you're going to, I don't really know.
We've talked that, I think that a bus-type setup would probably be part of any program. Now, you know, myself, I can't stand waiting on the bus, so I'm probably tracking myself across. But maybe other people are, well, I'm lazy, but maybe they're lazier than I am and they're going to wait. Or maybe, maybe they can't get over there, so.
There's kids over there.
Yeah, well.
You may not just get on across there.
If they like my, if they like their kids better than I do, maybe that. But possibly. So, but yes, I think, we've talked about that a bus or shuttle-type system would be integral to any larger event like that.
Yeah.
Mr. LaLance, where staff was coming from is that, is that we wanted the minimum requirements to be met on the north side of Dejarnet Lane, knowing that there may be times that there may be overflow parking across Dejarnet Lane that may be utilized. But what we wanted to do, at the very least, was for them to be able to provide the minimum requirements on the north side to where, to where they were meeting those requirements on the north side.
Okay. So we're looking for a public hearing on October 13th. Okay, so we're looking for a public hearing on October 13th if they meet all the other things you've requested?
Correct.
So...
And that includes initial architecture drawings, Holly?
I think that, that the public hearing motion wouldn't be if they meet those things. I think if you schedule it, you schedule it, and it will be held. It will just be that we will have, we actually have longer time than we normally would to continue to work with the applicant, because the meeting was pushed back a week, and we have five weeks in September. So our, our next Planning Commission meeting isn't for almost a month. And so we can continue to work with the applicant on those, on those outstanding issues.
Okay.
We're going with 13th on this one, too?
Yes, sir, to go, to go with the annexation that was scheduled.
I know.
We are going to make y'all, we're going to make y'all have the longest day.
All right, I'll move for approval that we set the, set it for 13th.
Motion in second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item F is an annexation petition and plan of services for the following rights of way. Approximately 85 linear feet of Parkwood Drive right-of-way, approximately 140 linear feet of Woodcrest Drive right-of-way, and approximately 100 linear feet of West Ridge Drive right-of-way. Rutherford County Engineering is the applicant. Ms. Rush, welcome.
Hey, thank you. Good afternoon, Commission, Chair Jones. And I got a few more for October 13th as a request, so...
Thanks.
Just gonna warm your seats up a little bit before I get to that part. So this is a petition for an annexation for rights of way. County Engineering Department is requesting the city to annex these segments into the city. These are road segments that are fronting along Rivers Edge subdivision, where the driveways or the house fronts onto these roadways. Because we would be serving those houses through our public services, we would like to have those road right-aways into our city limits. This was a request from Rutherford County Engineering Department. The city had taken this to the County Roads Board meeting in September, and the Road Board had voted to grant consent to the city to annex these rights of way. As indicated before, this is for Parkwood Drive. It's a .10 acre section. It includes about 30, excuse me, about 85 linear feet, as well as the intersection of West Ridge Drive and Woodcrest Drive. And that's approximately .27 of an acre. And that is 140 linear feet of Woodcrest and 100 linear feet of West Ridge Drive. Those are located in the maps that were attached to the staff report. And I'm going to try and scroll quickly, not that I'll get there, but there it is. Staff is currently preparing a plan of services that will be provided at the public hearing, and we are asking for the Planning Commission to please consider this for an October 13th public hearing date.
Nope.
Happy to answer any questions.
So moved.
Motion in second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item G is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 123 acres, located along Veals Road and Double Springs Road, and rights of way of approximately 2,400 linear feet of Veals Road and 2,430 linear feet of Double Springs Road. Hall Family Real Estate Partnership is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. As you indicated, the Hall Family Real Estate Partnership is the applicant, and they are represented by Mr. Matt Taylor from SEC. They've submitted a petition requesting that the property be annexed into the City of Murfreesboro. A portion of their property's already been annexed. That's the property that's to the west, or to the left of this site. There are four parcels that comprise this particular annexation request. We are also studying, as Sam Huddleston has indicates, more than what we need, because we can always scale back. So we are studying approximately 2,400 linear feet along Double Springs Road, along Veals Road, and approximately 2,430 linear feet along Double Springs Road. These right-of-way segments were also taken to the Rutherford County Road Board, and they also voted to support annexation of those rights of way. So just as background information. At this time, the property is located within the city's urban growth boundary, and it is contiguous to the city limits, along the west property line, as I had indicated, and along the south side of Veals Road, where Carter's Retreat subdivision is located. At this time, the applicant has not requested a zoning classification or applied for one. Since the property is currently zoned for residential purposes in the county, if this were to be annexed into the city, it would receive a zoning classification of RS-15. However, the city does anticipate receiving a proposal for zoning of this property. The city staff has been meeting with the applicants regarding a planned development zoning that would include the entirety of the property. So this subject property, as well as their other properties that's to the west, it would be for a development of approximately 300 to 400 units of attached and detached homes. Staff, and I believe Matt Taylor can confirm this, have been working really hard on issues and opportunities with, with that zoning, to deal with the density, as well as the project design. And that's one of the reasons why it hasn't come forward. We are bringing this annexation forward to you before the zoning, because you are in a contractual obligation with the seller, or with the buyer, to, to move this and get it into the city limits. The applicant is requesting annexation now. As I indicated, we have, we do feel support of the annexation at this point, because Veals Road annexation will connect the property to the north, which is the Farmhouse Development, with a road that connects it then down to Veals Road. This is identified in our major transportation plan, 2040 Plan, and is an important link to the city. The segment would then follow on from that location. It would be lane from Bradyfoot Pike, and then north to East Main Street. The segment from John Bragg Highway to the northern property will be constructed as part of the Farmhouse Down development, which has already been approved by the Planning Commission. And then that segment from Farmhouse Down to Veals Road would be constructed with this subdivision, once that would move forward. Staff is asking for this to also be on the October 13th hearing for the annexation only. Happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Taylor is also available. He could answer any if you'd like.
Okay, so we're just talking about the annexation, no companion zoning, and at this point, we don't have any idea how long it would be before we see a, a companion zoning request.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. We do anticipate to submit that tomorrow, actually. And so we would think it'd be the month trailing. As Ms. Rush said, we've had some opportunities that we've had to come up with, but I think we're getting close on most of those. So we got a little work to do, but I think it'll be ready next month.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Matt, sorry, Mr. Taylor, before you, just while I got you up there. So tell me, what, is there an importance to getting the...
Yes, sir. So what I have seen, and what the advice I gave to my client, because they were trying to get through the zoning process by end of the year, and so, at least through the first reading at council, assuming everything would go smooth. So I laid out a calendar. Sometimes annexations, because the extra time that it takes to advertise by state law, seems like that increases the time between Planning Commission and City Council. And so we just went ahead and made that request for the annexation one month early, while we worked through the zoning issues, to try to preserve getting through council by the end of the year, assuming everything goes smooth, so...
So would you anticipate getting it to council at the same time, or getting...
We would be fine with it getting us council at the same time if it was all in December. It doesn't do us a lot of good in both getting there, or, we don't really care if annexation gets there early, or at the same time as zoning. We're just trying to meet an end-of-the-year deadline, and so...
I guess to a certain extent, I guess, I think, and I may be talking about this before I think through it completely, but my, my initial, my initial response is, I wouldn't want it to get to council before the zoning was ready. Just, you know, to go, you know, to go through all the planning services and two public hearings and all that kind of stuff, and have nothing that's there, and no idea, and a bunch of question marks about whether or not it's even going to happen the way you want it to happen, and all those kinds of things. I'm, I'm hesitant on that.
And so if we submit, we could, we could delay the one, as long as we get an advertisement, maybe it's way out in December or something like that. But that, that's just what we were up against.
They didn't get it rezoned, it's going to be RS-15.
Yeah, it's RS-15.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it is what it is. What I'm saying is, is even though you might have apprehension over what the actual development's going to be, I mean, if, if it doesn't get, if the zoning doesn't get approved, it's going to go in and it's RS-15.
If they want to go ahead and push the...
Right.
Annexation.
Do we still have to have second readings for annexations? No? Okay. Never mind.
Well, the plan assert...
Yeah.
I see what you're, you're trying to get at. The plan of services would dictate...
Would matter a little, but I mean, RS-15, you know, is, I, I guess, you know, and maybe this goes back to a little bit of what I asked about last time. I mean, I think, I think the council has kind of had a broader brush of saying, kind of, we, we're trying to avoid kind of speculative zonings, and I, and maybe I'm thinking of this as a speculative annexation, maybe I ought to just say, just get the tax money and rock on with it, and not worry about whether or not it's, you know, it's a, you know, I just, I guess I'm, like I said, I hadn't really completely thought through it. I just know there are some little things that kind of are nagging at me a little bit about whether or not we would do these together or not, and that's just all I'm, I, I...
I think...
Ms. Rush, what are the different...
Councilman Lance, I just want to let you know, it's kind of like we said earlier, study big, and then we can always contract. So we are studying in the plan of services for up to 400 housing units, so that if it needs to contract, it can. So that would be kind of, I guess, worst-case scenario, or highest-density scenario. If that helps.
But I think, you know, from our standpoint, the way I'm looking at it, if we go ahead with annexation, and then zoning doesn't come along like they are anticipating, we've still got, we've annexed property that's RS-15. And if that doesn't bother the applicant, that's RS-15 zoning. But the council may not be able to...
I can't say that doesn't sound logical. I'm just kind of, I just...
Yeah, I'm like, yeah, go for it.
I mean, your thought process is that you don't want to annex something that you don't know what's going to happen, and I get that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So...
But the only thing that would be able to happen is an RS-15, single-family development, which would not be the worst thing in the world for us to have as a city. I don't think...
Well, there could be some...
Beyond that, we, council and planning commission have got total control over.
I, look, I, so first of all, I, what y'all are saying makes complete sense, and I'm cool with it, we'll get, get going with this, but there, there are other pieces to the puzzle. I e, somebody next door says, well, this is already annexed, so now we ought to be able to annex us. And we've done that in something that maybe doesn't turn out to be anything like what we think it might be one day. You know, and then we got to do that over there, because now we've annexed that, and it impacts this, so...
I don't know of a requirement that we annex someone that they ask...
No, it doesn't, there's no requirement, but you've been in enough of these meetings to know good and well that that's how this deal works. I mean, that, that, that's how, oh, well, he's got it next door, so why don't we do it next door to me, and I want to be able to do that? I mean, so I guess what I'm just trying to say is, that's probably the reason why there's something in my mind, and I think I've gotten a vibe from the council that it kind of is, we're trying to avoid speculative zoning, speculative annexation. But look, I'd say, let's go ahead, let's, let's get this, this will have to go through the council level, and so we'll...
As we always say, y'all know more than we know.
I, I think I'm good with passing along to that level.
Sure, and so if you, you know...
Mr. Lance and Madam Chair, I did want to bring up, you know, we, we as staff did look long and hard about, about the benefits of, of annexing this. Whenever we look at a potential annexation, we're looking at the benefits to the city. What we saw as an opportunity, or what we saw was an opportunity to get another leg of that, of that linkage that's right now identified as a midterm improvement on our, on our major transportation plan, with the Farmhouse Downs development to the north, constructing a, a large leg of that. This would be an opportunity to have a developer construct another, another leg of that. So I think that, that was the main benefit that we saw as, for, for annexation, was that roadway connection.
All right, I'll move for approval then.
And we're moving to set a public hearing for October 13th on this annexation petition and plan of services.
Approval of that.
And so with that motion in second, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Looking sure we're all on the same page.
Also great plat and plan.
Okay.
And they do, don't they?
Next on our agenda, item H is a zoning application for approximately 29.1 acres, located along Franklin Road, to be rezoned from RS-12 and RS-15 to RS-8, and approximately 4.5 acres to be rezoned from RS-15 to CF. Lennar Homes of Tennessee LLC is the developer. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. So the subject property is what we've commonly called the Milton Property, because that's who owns it. It does total 33.61 acres, of which 29 of those, approximately 29, would be rezoned from RS-15 and RS-12 to RS-8, as indicated on the map. So it is the northerly portion of the property. The, the bottom portion that's in blue would be rezoned from RS-15 to CF, and that's approximately 4.5 acres in size. The RS zoning district permits single-family residential detached uses on lots that are at least 8,000 square feet in size. On a side note, the zoning ordinance, if you recall, was recently revised for the RS-8 zoning district that now requires at least 75% of the building material, be cementous siding, or brick, or, or other masonry product, stone. And this was because it was intended to help minimize any potential for fire damage due to the smaller lot size for adjacent houses. The adjacent properties, as indicated on this map, are zoned with a mixture of uses. There is planned unit development for Victory Station to the east, as well as some RS-15. There is a mixture of RS-12 to the north, and Blackman Cove PUD, single-family residential subdivision, is to the northeast. To the west, southwest, and south of Franklin Road are unincorporated portion of the county, which are all zoned RM, and that's their medium-density residential. And then finally, to the south and southeast is a PCD, which is for commercial plan development, which includes the Toots Restaurant, and as well as an approved site plan for Tire World. So the future land use map, which is what we look at when we're looking at potential for rezoning, does indicate that this was identified as auto, urban, general, commercial. As we've experienced in the last few years, these large, very deep parcels are really difficult to build in for commercial now. There really isn't a lot of demand for those kind of large lot sizes. The CF zoning would be consistent with that land use category, but the residential portion would not be consistent. Staff, as many of you know, are working on a study for the future land use map for some revisions, and that will be coming forward, and Greg can, can address that, but in, in the next few months, there'll be some workshops coming up, I believe. And that is kind of the direction that we're going with some of these larger lots, is that we're looking at commercial along the frontage and residential towards the back, and trying to, trying to move a little bit away from some of the higher density and start increasing our detached product. So thus, the applicant originally came in with a request for townhomes, and has been... So thus, the applicant originally came in with a request for townhomes and has been agreeable and supportive of changing that to a detached product, which is the RS-8 now. So in this case, staff is supportive of the request, and we are asking if you could schedule this also for October 13th for a public hearing, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. It'll be a busy night.
I move to approve the idea of setting this for October 13th.
All right, wonderful. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That moves us on to our staff reports and other business, and I'll go ahead and warn you all, we have four items under our staff reports and other business, so we will try to move through those quickly. The first one is the consideration of our 2022 Planning Commission calendar. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and as we always do in the fall, we bring to you the Planning Commission calendar for the following year. It's been included in your agenda packet and tried to accommodate the city and county schools' spring break schedule. Of course, we don't know the fall break schedule yet, so we reserve the right to shift a meeting like we did this year. We tried to accommodate, or tried to account for all the holidays, and at any rate, it's, we would ask that you schedule a public hearing for the approval of the calendar on October 13th. That was a joke, by the way. We don't have to...
That's right. Do that.
I was about to say, so moved.
Yeah. We're like, that'll be a quick one. We can get that one done.
Fair enough. I was about to make a joke how appropriate it is that we would have a meeting on Groundhog Day. Just keep like...
Moving.
I do not need a public hearing for this. I would just ask that you approve it if you see fit.
We can always change these. We're just trying to have a good idea of what's coming, right?
Right, right. If we see any need to change them, or if you see any need to change them, we can always bring it back up for a vote to amend the calendar.
All right, I'll move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item B is going to be a Siegel Road LAJ Investments subdivision, final plat for one lot on 3.6 acres, zoned RS-15, located along Siegel Road. LAJ Investments LLC is the developer. I believe this would've made it on the consent agenda, but Ms. Green, you give us the detail.
But Ms. Green made a mistake. I apologize for...
Not bad.
...your meeting. I did, Bill's been relishing in it, I think. I'm sorry. It's been a long meeting. But what was submitted was a plat for your consideration to create a lot of record along Siegel Road. This plat was submitted on time and got comments, but as I mentioned, I inadvertently did not include it on the agenda, and I apologize for that. It is for property that is just south of Thompson Lane, and maybe the map before can help you see the location of it. The properties at some point were not lawfully subdivided, meaning going through our subdivision process and having the appropriate street frontage. With this plat, it will correct any of those past mistakes and get everything on a sure footing. So it will be for one lot on 3.6 acres. The zoning is RS-15 and will remain RS-15 with this action. Nothing will change. The applicants were able to address our staff comments. As of today, I was communicating with, I think, a draftsperson working on the plan regarding sewer access to this property, because one, I guess, the really only significant comment was that it needed to extend sewer, and they have confirmed as of this morning that that will be able to be extended from the church to the north. So now the plat is in good order, and staff would recommend that you approve it, subject to all staff comments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you.
Our next item is the Clary Park Planned Development Pattern Book. We have a revision to page 14. Ms. Green?
Thank you again. This next item is a little different than something we've done before. I say, don't get nervous about the subject. I think it's something that just clarifies the program book. You may remember Clary Park went through several iterations, and we finally got to a plan, I think, that everybody can get on board with. What was not updated between a couple of the city council public hearings is the uses permitted chart, which is page 14 of the program book. What they needed to do was add single-family attached as a use and allow it in areas two and six. That would be consistent with the plan that was approved, the conditions of approval, the layouts, but while working on restrictive covenants for this property, it's my understanding that Area 2 has already transferred ownership to the townhome developer. We noticed that it just wasn't clear in this chart, and so when plan developments are adopted by city council, they essentially become little zoning ordinances for that property. Staff isn't comfortable making changes after the fact without it being in the light of day. So we're bringing this to you to, I don't know if it's, other than blessing, what kind of action we need, and it will go to city council as well. But we have Mr. Gunther here and Mr. Taylor, both who work on this project, if you have any questions about it, but this is really clarifying that, yes, single-family attached, i.e. townhomes, is a use that is allowed in both areas two and six. You have a letter and exhibit on your table.
Mm-hmm. Does anybody have any questions about that? Like Ms. Green said, we went all the way around it and missed it in that one, maybe one page out of the book.
Two little X's.
Thank you for catching that.
So moved.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our last item today that we wanted to mention was just a reminder to everybody about the September 18th street renaming ceremony for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. And most everybody, we hope, got notification about this, but this is on September 18th at 9:00 a.m. at the Patterson Park Community Center. And so we hope everyone can attend, and just wanted to make sure we mentioned that again. Certainly, any planning commission members and city council, staff, everybody that can be there would be much appreciated, so.
Can I, I got one request.
Absolutely.
Matthew, can you send us where we stand on continuing ed? You sent an opportunity to us like yesterday, but can you, or somebody send us an update where each of us stands on that, and then maybe if there's opportunities that we can go ahead and put on our calendar for the rest of this year, if that makes any sense?
Absolutely, we can send you an update, and as you mentioned, I did send an opportunity, really, really neat opportunity. Cumberland Region Tomorrow always has a good, what they call the Power of Ten Summit for the 10 counties surrounding Nashville, and former U.S. Senator Bob Corker is gonna be one of their speakers during this virtual training opportunity, and I think that will be either two or three hours of continuing ed towards your four hours, four-hour requirement. Planning Department will cover the fee, of course, so just let us know if you're interested in attending that.
Does it have to be done, do we have to be on it live, or can we watch it afterwards?
I think you can watch it afterwards, but I'll double-check for you.
Yeah, I mean, if, just for what it's worth, I mean, I'd sign, I can't watch it live, but I would sign up if we need to sign up prior to, in order to be able to watch it afterwards, or however that works, I'd...
If I had to guess, Mr. LeLance, what I think probably is that you would need to register, and they would send you like a password to watch it afterward, after, to watch the recorded version afterwards. But I'll find out and let you know for certain.
Okay. Is there any other business? And if not, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.